My name is Brian Waller, Zoning Board of Appeals Chairman. Typically, as a preliminary matter, we make sure that the remote members could hear and be heard, but we don't have any on the line at the moment. So it is 7:02 PM. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted both remotely and in person, consistent with Chapter 22 of the Acts of 2022, which extends remote meeting protocols through March 31st, 2023. This meeting is convened by a Zoom video conference and in person, as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. All participation within this meeting will be visible to others. Please be aware that others may be able to see you, and you should take care of not to screen share your computer if you are remote. This meeting may feature public comment. For anyone that is attending virtually, if you'd like to request acknowledgement to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. For those on the phone exclusively, the AV staff will coordinate the meeting administrator to allow you to speak. For those in person, if we open to public comment, we'll ask you to step up to the podium. For all speakers, please state your name and address prior to your comments. And finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. So just to address Pleasant Street, so we've exceeded the capacity of this room, so unfortunately, we're going to have to continue that to another date, and we'll ensure that the next date it can accommodate, you know, as many people that want to come.
Do we have to pick the date and time?
So Dan, I just want to make sure, as our counsel, you concur with that, but, you know, Evan was pretty certain that, you know, this needs postponed, and, you know, I think we're probably looking at next week.
If there are people that are trying to get in and can't get in there, then I agree. You really should open the hearing, because you have a deadline to open the hearing under the statute, so I would open the hearing tonight and then continue to a date certain.
Yep, okay. Next Thursday, is everyone available?
I am not. I'm not either. I'm at a town.
Wednesday? Tuesday? Monday?
You can do Wednesday. I'll clear the gym who's ever in there. They're just gonna have to get kicked out. Yeah, I can do Wednesday.
I can't do Wednesday unless Dennis is available, and Dennis is actually on the line.
He is?
I don't see him.
There he is.
Wednesday night, the 29th?
Yeah.
I could make that work.
I'll just, I'll clear the gym and have everything set up in the gym. I don't know about cameras. I don't know about Zoom. It's gonna be the owl. I'm not sure how good it's going to be, but I will do my best.
What's the owl?
It's another remote thing, because it's not, we won't have this, so it's another remote. I just don't know how it's gonna be. I don't know what it's gonna look like or how it's gonna work, but we'll do our best.
Samantha, you guys have done South Grafton Community House. Is that a bigger room, do you know?
I don't think it's bigger than the gym, though.
What about the library?
Well, no, but they had, I thought they had better, they had good audio. Were we using the owl there, too?
No, our meeting there wasn't recorded when we did that one.
What about the library?
We have to use the owl at the library.
What's the capacity up there? Bob would know.
Not too much more than we have here.
Oh, really?
Maybe another one and a half room.
Okay.
So we should go over to Jim, just so we don't have to, you know, no point cutting it close anyway, that's for sure.
Okay.
So Wednesday? Wednesday, 7?
Yeah, gym or senior center out?
Senior Center's too small.
It's too small?
So the high school gym?
No, no, the gym here.
Gym here. The gym here. That would be if we could use the high school auditorium, but no. They've got too much going on over there.
Actually, I need to check my calendar.
Do they have a sound system for the gym?
No, they're gonna have to set, you know, remote mics and stuff up for us, like they've done before.
But they can?
I believe so, yeah.
All right.
I'll check with Bob first thing tomorrow, because I know we had-
We've done it before.
We've done it before. We did it for somebody before.
No, there's just nothing worse, there's nothing worse than attending a meeting, being out there and not be able to hear what's going on.
Right.
I agree.
We did it for Prentice Place.
We did it for Prentice, and didn't have anyone show up.
And had nobody show up, so.
I think we'll have that problem next week.
Yeah, I don't think so.
All right, so I think, as Dan said, I think we need to open case whatever it is, and then immediately a motion to continue to Wednesday, the 29th, at 7:00 PM.
All right, so this time I entertain a motion to open the public hearing on case number-
892.
892.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll do a roll call vote. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Public hearing is opened.
I move that we continue case number 892. Is that it?
Uh huh.
To Wednesday, March 29th, at 7:00 PM.
So moved. Second.
Made and seconded. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. So the Pleasant Street, the hearing on Pleasant Street will be continued to March 29th at 7:00 PM.
So just to let all of you know in here, you will never get another legal notice. Meetings will be continued, and a date will be picked at the end of each meeting. So if you don't attend and you don't know, ask one of your neighbors, or the agenda will be posted four days prior to the meeting. But the legal notice is there is only one sent, and that is at the beginning of the case. Okay?
Or, not to delude you with phone calls, but call the building-
Or you can call the building, you can call it next me.
So why is that? Why you can't send a second notice?
Because by law, we only have to send one, and that's when the hearing is originally scheduled.
You can send another one to let everybody know.
But you, so the intent is to have as many people involved as want to be, but we can't proactively send out notices to-
You're not appreciating how much effort everybody put to, you know, take their time and come here today.
We do too, and we do the same. We appreciate that.
Accommodating yourself. It took a lot of effort for people to leave whatever they had today, tonight, this evening to come and show up.
Understood.
Understood. You don't think it took me a lot of effort to be here?
I don't know. You're one, and we have like 50 people here, right? And they're not even being treated as they should be, like, oh, wait outside, don't stand here.
That's not us excluding them, and the reason we're continuing is so that we can include them. So it's just a logistical problem that we're trying to address.
Now, they don't even know. Half of that. Yeah, we do know also.
Will you be using the same Zoom or a different Zoom link?
It should be the same.
No, it's a different one. I have to book a new meeting. It will be different.
So you have to check that online?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And certainly apologize for the inconvenience. You know, it's, we were ready to start tonight, so it's disappointing to us as well.
Yeah, we don't know.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Dan, let's talk.
Yeah, Mr. Hill?
Are there people in the hallway that are not in the room right now?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would suggest that you print out a notice on a piece of paper advising people in the hallway of the new meeting time and place, and post-tape that to the door so that everybody in the hallway is on notice of the new date, to avoid any, anybody, you know, making an argument that they didn't have proper notice, just in case someone's in the hallway and can't hear what's going on right now in the room.
Do it right now, Dan?
Yeah, I would do it right now. Just print it out, tape it on the door while you're, you know, you've got other business to do, so you can do this while you're doing the other business, and just that way, people in the hallway know that the hearing was continued.
I don't think anyone was actively waiting out there, but-
Should we tell the applicant who we just continued what's going on? They're all outside.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
Oops. None of them?
I don't think so.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, there's some.
Oh, okay. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we're in a holding pattern while we let Katrina do that, because-
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question while this is happening?
Please.
So to next week's meeting on the 29th, in person, did I hear correctly that there is no Zoom virtual component to that?
No, there will be. It will be a different link than the link for tonight's meeting.
Okay.
That was the-
I'll still try to be in person for that one. I should be back in town.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, for anyone else in the room or online, a new meeting notice will be posted with a new Zoom link, and that'll be available on the town website. My pleasure.
We got a, like, held a spare room.
What's that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's on the door, and I handed them out, and I sent it to everybody, so we're good. You're fast. When I need to.
Okay, so we will move on to Fisherville. Do we need to reopen the public hearing?
Yeah, we do, actually, but you can just do that. There's, you know, there's no motion or anything. Just, you're reopening, because we continued it.
Okay, so we'll reopen the hearing on Fisherville Terrace, the notice of project change.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So at the last meeting, we agreed in principle, actually, Attorney Dax, you know, engaged, oh, there he is, front center.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, so at the last hearing, we agreed, I think, in principle on, you know, this NPC and a couple of changes or conditions or changes to conditions, and the attorneys, I think, wrote it up, and I think we all have a copy of it here. I believe the only issue right now is perhaps when to begin or when to require a bond for the off-site work. It's a new condition J3. I don't know, Mr. Dax, do you want to add anything to that or say any more than that?
Sure. Thank you, everyone, again. Christopher Agostino, counsel for the applicant, Fisherville Terrace LLC. As you described, we discussed the amended plans at the last hearing, and there was a concern expressed that despite the peer review and the drainage calculations showing that the revised pipe layout in Main Street would provide adequate capacity, just as an additional safeguard, the board asked that we stand by our design and post a bond that would last for two years following completion of the project, and that if, for some reason, the pipe sizing turned out to be insufficient, that it would provide funding for replacing the pipes that we had proposed with a larger pipe, or the bond be adequate to accomplish that, or make whatever other adjustments might be necessary. So, you know, we expressed that we want to gain the board's confidence and try to put some of the past concerns behind us, so the applicant's willing to post that bond, and then it just became a question of when that bond would be put in place. And I think since the idea is that the bond would secure work necessary to upgrade the system to support runoff from the entire completed site, that is, all of the impervious area that's proposed up the hill, it didn't make sense to have that in place at the beginning of the project. So we had proposed posting the bond prior to issuance of the last occupancy permit, and a concern was expressed by counsel that, you know, what if, what if the project didn't go forward and the Main Street drainage infrastructure was insufficient? And, you know, the discussion was, well, if the project didn't go forward, you wouldn't have all the impervious area in place. So we went back and forth as to the timing on when that bond would go in, and the idea that we proposed as the applicant was, well, when you get up the hill and you start to create all that additional impervious area, that's when you would really know whether or not the pipe sizing was okay, and that's when the pipe sizing would become critical. So at that point, we suggested maybe a compromise in discussion with counsel for the board to make sure that bond's posted prior to the 51st unit occupancy permit, I believe. And when that number was suggested, we looked at the plans and, you know, our projected build out and what we can do, and, you know, although we think this is absolute belt and suspenders, again, we want to meet the board on this and, you know, regain the board's confidence here, so we are, we are willing to put it up at that 51st unit if that's acceptable.
So I don't know who I'm gonna ask this, whether it's Steve or Munir or you, but what's the split of houses between the small Loop Road and the bigger Loop Road? Where I'm headed here is, would it make sense, it might make more sense to have it in place by the time you start working on houses on the bigger Loop Road, because I believe you're gonna phase in lower Loop Road first.
The first phase, the smaller Loop Road is 22 units.
I'd feel more comfortable if, once you're going on the bigger Loop Road, that's when we kicked it in, you know, so 22. I mean, what I initially proposed was exactly what you do for the onsite bond, which was, I think, prior to the issuance of the first occupancy permit. So that's what I proposed. I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'd feel a little bit better with a compromise of the 22 or, I guess it would be 23, 23rd occupancy permit. The idea being, once you're into the bigger road, that's when, you know, a good significant amount of impervious will be.
Well, I think the other piece of that is, by saying the 51st or the last that was originally, that assumes that the only issue that could arise would be once all of the impervious surface is created, and there, you know, it could be determined that the 30-inch pipe isn't large enough after the first building, or further, you know, utility work or whatever, site prep on the Phase 2. And that's not something that we had asked Jeff to opine on, so I don't know, that's-
No, you're right. It could, it could happen at any point. It could be no good right out of the chute, but I know, I'd be okay with 22.
I think that-
You know, tie it to the phasing essentially and-
23.
Yeah, so like with the 23rd. By the time they get to the 23rd, they'll be, they should be working on, you know, the bigger Loop Road at that point. I don't know, how's that sound?
I'll defer to Munir on this one. You know, we had talked about that possibility, that that might be something we would discuss this evening. Ultimately, I think it's between the board and the applicant. I would just say that, you know, Jeff's peer review, and again, the drainage calculations that were done, were based on the entire project being built out with conservative, meaning aggressive rainfall calculations, and at that point, peak flows, I think, the tightest one showed 95% capacity, or 92% capacity, whatever it was. But, you know, I think just keeping in mind that the studies that were done were under sort of worst-case analysis, but I'll defer to Munir.
That's fine, so 23rd occupancy permit, correct?
Yep.
Occupancy, building.
It's occupancy.
They've been saying occupancy. For whatever reason, I-7, I think, which is the onsite mitigation, ties it to the first occupancy permit, so they were saying occupancy. I mean, I, you know, I don't think it makes that much of a difference. I don't think there'll be that much of a lead time difference between the two.
What do you think about that, Peter?
The number's fine. How many bonds do we, we're gonna have a bond for him putting the pipe in, I take it, then can he-
Well, no, actually, there isn't a bond for, if that's, there's two bonds. One for onsite, which is what normally happens, planning board or us or whoever.
Right.
And this is a second one to cover the off-site.
But that's only gonna kick in at number 23?
No.
So-
Occupancy, not building.
So does that mean DPW is only gonna make them have a $5,000 bond to put all that pipe in the road?
I don't know what that means, Peter. I don't know how that works.
So as far as putting the pipe, if I may, as far as putting the pipe in the road, it's a precondition to the next building permit, so we have to get that done before we go forward, and we've agreed to that.
They don't get any building permits at all until that pipe is in.
Right.
No, all right, I understand that, but-
So I think what you're saying, Peter, is what happens, they dig up the road and-
Screw it all.
They ruin it. You know, and leave us with piles of dirt and stuff. I don't know how the DPW handles that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
DPW makes like an open, road opening permit, and it requires a specific bond.
It does.
Yeah. It's not that much, but, but they also, like, the way that the fire department wrote it, we have to do the first section and then backfill that, then they do the next section, so.
So the fire truck's being taken out.
Yeah.
Now, that road, once you're done putting the pipe in-
Yep.
And you do your patch-
Correct.
The state's gonna overlay it-
Yep.
Down sometime this, this coming, this year.
Yep.
I mean, that's why it's critical that they use flow fill or whatever for compaction reasons.
Yep.
Okay, no, I'm fine.
Okay, so the 23rd occupancy permit?
Yep.
I just have one question.
Mr. Yeomanz?
My question is to Dan Hill. The only thought that comes to mind is the units are counted towards SHI when building permits are issued, not occupancy permits.
Correct.
That's the trigger for SHI inclusion in the Department of Housing and- CD.
Yep.
So I don't know if that is going to create a problem relative to that, because I think that, I think that DHCD will accept the planning department's certificate requesting inclusion on the issuance of building permits, not occupancy permits, and that, that's the only thing that comes to mind, Dan, is that would there be any negative impact of saying the building permit, the 23rd building permit?
Isn't it just the first building permit that has to be issued?
I think once the, once the first building permit is issued, the whole project is counted. Yeah, so we're counting as far as SHI on this project, it's 25, there's 50 duplexes, and we can count, you know, 25, so it's 100 units, so we have 25 SHI units that-
Right, but that will be long behind us, or hopefully, by the time the 23rd occupancy permit-
From a DHCD point of view, I personally would rather see it tied into building permits.
I don't think the bond is at all related to SHI and DHCD.
No, the bond isn't related to it. I agree, but the, just saying, you know, it's, it's the issuance of building permits that's the trigger for SHI, not occupancy.
But that will have already happened by the time there's any occupancy permit, and we're saying the 23rd occupancy.
You know, what's unclear in my mind with DHCD is whether it's unit by unit, or whether it's, as Peter said, whether it's that first building permit that's issued, and whether that creates the trigger.
But I don't think that's a, factors into the decision on this.
No.
No, yeah, that doesn't affect this NPC.
No, 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 I agree, it's just the term of, the term of occupancy permit versus building permit.
Yeah, okay, all right.
SHI is tied into, for this project, it's building permit, because it's been 10 years since it was originally-
Correct.
And we spent, you know, nine or 10 years giving extensions to it, so that's the only caution I have, and I-
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Grafton Board of Appeals approve the notice of project change decision as drafted, subject to condition J3 being the 23rd occupancy permit.
Motion made and seconded. Do a roll call vote. Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes, so the notice of project change is approved.
Can you sign two of these, please, before you leave?
And I think we have to just initial that.
Or can, actually, can you, do you have the word document?
I believe so.
Or, you know, I would assume that-
Yeah, because you gave it to me.
I did?
Well, you, or you emailed it to me and asked me to have it printed for everyone tonight. Somebody did.
Or one of the attorneys, I'm sure, can send it to you. I think we want to have it changed to say 23rd, and then we, you know, you can print it, we can sign it for-
I have it in here. Yep, I can change it right now. What condition, J?
It's a new condition, J3.
Print to the issuance of the 23rd.
Yep.
Looking forward to just keeping it, following the permit and keeping everything right. Sorry about any issues that we've done in the past.
Keep people off the site before 7:00.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's that? So you have to record it or-
Well, sign it, and then it has to be stamped by them.
Then I'll, I'll file it with the town clerk tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'll send you a copy of it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Great, thank you, everyone. Did he sign?
Good night.
I'm printing a new one, Peter. I'm printing a new one.
He doesn't.
He doesn't sign it.
Although you have an alternate opening if you want to join the board.
That would be different.
Hey, maybe he might. I do not have minutes, because I did not have time to get minutes from last week's hunting down.
So we're done on the agenda.
Wow. Wow, we're done. Wow. So I will talk to Jen tomorrow and get everything kicked out of the gym next Wednesday. Um, I'll talk to Bob and both Bob, Stotoma and Berger and get everything set up.
Mm-hmm.
100 chairs?
I would.
Okay. I'll have a table for us. I guess I could put a table if the select board wants to sit there, at least put them in the front row or something.
Yep.
Could I have this chair?
I can bring these chairs down for us. Yeah, these are great. I can bring them down for us, absolutely.
All right. Uh, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes.